All right, go ahead. I have the time as 7:01. I'm going to go ahead and call the September 14th Board of Trustees meeting to order. If you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, one nation, the states of America. One nation, under God, indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
For all. Sorry, I'm using two computers. I muted and unmuted, I apologize. All right, Mr. Heiston, if you could go ahead and take the roll, please.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Cross.
Here.
And Mr. Raymer.
Here.
Everyone is present.
Thank you. Visitor comments, I believe, is our first order of business, as usual. If we have any visitor comments, anyone that would like to come forward?
So if you are a call-in user, I will unmute you here in just a moment after the ones that are here visually on WebEx say their part, if they have any. This just makes it a little bit easier flow here.
So do we have any visitors for visitor comments for this evening? I'm not seeing anyone unmute, so I don't know if you want to go ahead and unmute the...
Yes.
I'll go ahead and make one statement.
Okay.
You got it?
Yes.
Oh, I just wanted to mention that the free meal program through the Dayton Metro Libraries has been extended through the year. I think it was going to end at September 29th. So again, that is extended to the end of the year. So if we could get that information, if people want to utilize that. And I'm sure I'll have a few more comments as the reports come in. So thank you very much.
Do we have any other visitor comments this evening?
All right, I'm going to go ahead and unmute the call-ins. All right, it looks like the call-ins are unmuted. If anybody would like to speak up?
I'm not seeing anyone, but it's hard for me to see them. All right, I think, please let me know if I missed you, but I don't see anyone unmuting. After she unmuted, I saw most of you go back on mute. So I'm going to assume then that you guys do not have visitor comments. So I'm going to move on to the fiscal officers' report. Mr. Heiston.
Good evening. Let's start, very first item, and that is the minutes from August the 10th meeting. And Mr. Raymer contacted me about 15 minutes ago and told me that of all the attachments I sent to you with my report, I forgot to attach the minutes. So I think we need to, I've sent them now to you, but there wasn't sufficient time for you to all review them. So it's just per minutes until October. All right, I did, though, remember to attach all the financial reports. And I've given you the fund status report as of the end of August, the year-to-date cash summary from January through the end of August, August payment listing, and the August review listing. And I did want to specifically point out that I have paid the warrants. They total $828,500. They were written to the city of Germantown during August. And those are for the 2020 appropriations related to all of our joint levies. Specifically, I paid $58,500 for the park levy, $75,500 for the pool levy, $235,500 for the fire levy, $150,000 for the senior citizen levy, and $309,000 for the EMS fire levy. All of these amounts were included in the 2020 appropriation budget approved at the organizational meeting back in January. Sometime later this year, I plan to sit down with Germantown Finance Director Pat Shively, and we will review the fund balances held by both jurisdictions. And with that, are there any other questions or any questions about the financial reports?
I do have one, Mark. I saw, you know, I appreciate you breaking that detail out separately. I saw that on page four of the distribution or payment listing. It looks like $893,000-ish dollars will be paid to them, to Germantown. The receipts this month, I think in relation to those from the county auditor, $468,000. I guess the question is, we're paying about double that. Is that money already been received earlier this year, or is it yet to come? Are those receipts yet to come later in this year? Are we paying in advance or in arrears, I guess is the question?
The $50,000 was specifically part of the advance of the August tax collections. We've already received all the monies from the February tax collections, and we have received most of the funds from the August. We have not received the final settlement yet. But if you look at the cash summary by fund, each of those funds that are joint with the city, you can see that in the revenue column, I'm not sure if he is unmuted, but we need to mute that person because there's some background noise. We have received, for each of the joint levy funds, an amount equal, at least as much as what I paid out. So we had plenty of cash on hand in each of those funds to make those payments.
Clear, thank you, sir.
Any other questions on the financial reports?
I'll just also say, thank you for adding the detail to that payment listing. I think that's something you added this month. It helps me out tremendously, so I appreciate that.
And I thank Lori Rohrbach, who showed me where that button is to press on the UAN system to get that detail to print out. So I knew that Mark Keener had always done it prior to my tenure, but I had never seen the button where you can add the details. So I will continue to do that.
Thank you, it is helpful.
If there's no other questions, could I have a motion to approve the August financial reports and authorize the payment of all the August bills? And those include warrants $50,161, $50,200, and vouchers $457 through $517. And those electronic vouchers are for payroll direct deposit, payroll tax and withholding, EFTs, and other electronic payments.
I'll make a motion to approve the appropriations for the current month.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you very much. I also wanted to point out, although it is not in my August report because this occurred at the beginning of September, that we have received an additional $13,036.94 from the CARES Act for the coronavirus relief. So that means in total, we've received just slightly over $39,000. And again, as I reported last month, if nothing changes, all the unappropriated funds will be returned to the county by October 15th, and unexpended funds will be returned to the state by 12/31. However, the Ohio Senate recently passed Senate Bill 357, which will distribute the remaining $650 million in CARES Act funds. If that bill is passed by the House and signed by Governor DeWine, the state deadlines are going to be extended. The new dates would be, the unappropriated funds would be returned to the county, and that would change from August 15th to November 20th. And the date to return any unexpended funds to the state will change from 12/31 to February 1st of 2021. And unlike the original House Bill 481, which the two receipts we've had so far came from, and that bill directed that the two distributions we received were based on the local government formula, Senate Bill 357 would distribute the funds based on population. So with our population of 2,894 people in the unincorporated part of Germantown, we would receive approximately $104,287 if the House passes the bill as it now stands, and it's signed by the governor, which would give us well over $140,000 in total for coronavirus relief. We have received some guidelines from the OTA, from the Ohio Office of Management and Budget, about sharing excess CARES Act funds. And I know, Mr. Raymer, you first brought this up at last month's meeting. We've now received the guidelines to be followed. The funds can be distributed to another jurisdiction or to a nonprofit that can better serve the specific needs of our community. This is essentially a sub-grant by the township to that particular entity. The sub-grant funds would still have to be used for relief of coronavirus expenses. And if the trustees decide tonight to award sub-grants, we will need to provide notice of the funding to the sub-recipient, and we also need to sign a sub-grant agreement. And in deciding to approve the sub-grants, the trustees would also need to determine if the township will advance the funds or provide reimbursement after the fact. Finally, we're required to monitor the funds used by the sub-recipient and include these expenditures in our reporting to the state at the end of the process. So my recommendation, I would recommend the trustees tonight pass a resolution approving sub-grants with the city of Germantown and/or the Valley View Local School District. In that resolution, I would recommend that the trustees grant me the authority to sign a sub-grant agreement with either entity or both, on behalf of the township, and also grant me the authority to determine the amount of funds to be distributed in the sub-grants based on the amount of CARES Act funds that are excess to our needs, which I think will be most of the money. And additionally, I would recommend that the trustees allow me to determine with each sub-recipient whether the sub-grants should be provided as an advance or on a reimbursement basis. And if you would provide me with all of that authority, that would avoid us having to schedule a special meeting to make these decisions, once I reach out to the city and the school to determine their needs. And with that, I would open it up to discussion.
Do you know how much we have already spent or set aside out of the CARES Act money?
Only a few dollars at this time. We don't know what may come down the road, but I don't anticipate using very much of that total money, especially if we get the other $104,000 from Senate Bill 357.
Yeah, Mr. Heiston, I actually really appreciate you coming up with this idea of how to grant you the authority so we can manage this efficiently. I guess, a couple of thoughts I have, I totally agree. I think it's a good idea to try to put use of the funds here in our area. Obviously, we don't have the need for it. I guess the question is, I know the school has an overwhelming need with the amount of money they're going to spend with COVID. I assume Germantown has more than we do, obviously, but I know they get a fair amount of funds as well. Do we think or know, or anybody has spoken with them to understand if they have an excess need versus what they received?
I've had a discussion with City Manager Judy Gilan about the process that we may well decide to do tonight. But in that conversation, I did not, we did not address whether the city has more need than the funds they have. But I will reach out to them, assuming that you decide we're going to go in this direction. If we don't do this, then what will happen is, either on October 15th, or if it changes, by November 20th, we'll just return the funds back to the county if neither entity or any other entity that you might choose to look at doesn't need the funds.
I guess before we get too far into where the money goes, my only other thing is, I would prefer that we didn't advance the funds. My understanding is, you know, they're going to incur these costs regardless if we were to transfer any monies to them, and they should be, you know, really happy that we're able to and willing to provide that fund. So I would not put us out to advance those funds. That would be my initial position. Everything else you offered up, I would be in total agreement to. I think the only other thing to discuss on this is, do we have any other entities outside of Valley View in Germantown that we'd be interested in, such as Jackson Township, Farmersville, anything else? And then how we would want to disperse them or prioritize them based on the amount of money we had left after we covered our expenses?
Jackson Township and Farmersville also have been receiving money all the way along, initially based on the local government formula. And if the new bill passes, based on their population, I have no idea what their situation is. I've not spoken to them.
Yeah, I saw, obviously, the other, particularly like Jackson Township and Farmersville, much smaller amount. You know, this last slug looks like $104,000 for us, potentially. There's much smaller than that, obviously. So they might not have as much left over, but I doubt they have enough expenses to cover it now. I did speak to someone, this is another thing to be interested in, to someone within, I believe it was Farmersville, and they had an idea of implementing some kind of electronic system to monitor some of their maintenance, like water, sewer maintenance, or something like that, so they didn't have to have manned people manning those systems. I thought it was a creative way, I didn't know if it would qualify or not, but that's just something else for us to think about, that they were actually going to attempt to install some fixed assets to try to qualify that for COVID expenditures as well.
I'm not sure whether that qualifies either. There is another webinar this coming Friday. I just, just before this meeting, sent to the trustees notice of that webinar by the OTA to discuss uses of the CARES Act money. But I'm not sure of that particular situation where that would fall into that category.
So I guess at this point, Mr. Stubbs or Mrs. Reed, do you have any other questions? I guess the last thing I'll ask real quick before you guys have additional questions is, because the deadlines do look like they're moving, we will have the ability to discuss this at one more meeting before we make a final decision. Or, Mr. Heiston, do you suggest we go ahead and pass the resolution tonight? That way, we're ahead of the game.
If you're so inclined to do the sub-round, I would suggest you go ahead and pass it tonight so that we can start the conversation with whatever entity you decide we should look into and start that process because they would need time to figure out what their needs are, and they have to document every expense eventually and get it back to us with whatever funds they don't use. I see Mr. Cross has raised his hand. You need to unmute, Mark.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Heiston.
Mark.
It's too...
Mark. We're getting feedback. I'm not, we're not hearing the details. I see you muted your other, but maybe that helps. Try it again.
Oh, I was just going to ask the question, can you hear me? Yeah?
I can now.
Could the funds possibly go to something like the food bank in Dayton? I mean, if it comes down to, we have, you know, $50,000 left, could that be one option to go with? Even though it's not local, it certainly serves the entire area.
I'm not sure. That might be a question I can ask at the webinar on Friday.
Yeah, I think that would be just an option, yeah. Thank you.
So I just want to, just to clarify, I know you said that, I believe it's $39,000 roughly is what we are for sure getting or have already gotten. Is that correct, Mr. Heiston?
Yes, we have more than $39,000.
Okay. So tonight, if we decide to do that, it would really only be allocating for part of that $39,000, correct? It would not be for the $104,000, is that correct?
If you do a, that would be more open-ended and not specific. We could eventually use the $104,000 if we receive it. But at this point, we would only be talking to the entities about some portion of the $39,000.
I just have one more question, I think. So I know Lysol wipes, Clorox wipes, all of that they're saying are not working. Has the township allotted for money for spray to spray on the tables, or was it desks, sorry? To spray on the tables so that we can, you know, hopefully get back in there at some point and have in-person meetings? Or, for instance, when the zoning board meets, or we have to get another venue, we have that spray to bring in there to use? That way, we could still use some of the money, and it would go to the township, and we could use it for cleaning supplies? I don't think it would be a big chunk of money, but, you know, a little bit.
That's probably a question best answered either by Mr. Holbrook or Chief Anzik.
I'm sure we could purchase additional cleaning supplies. That would be up to the board. I mean, whatever they want to direct us to do, we can certainly do that. We have purchased just a handful of wipes and other cleaning supplies, but not enough to come anywhere close to the amount of money that the CARES Act is providing.
Okay, I just know that right now, they're saying that Clorox wipes and, you know, a lot of those wipes aren't effective. It says it's effective against coronavirus, but coronavirus versus coronavirus 19 is different, and so they're not killing COVID-19, the wipes, I mean. So I just didn't know if we had, if we already have enough. I don't want you to go out and, you know, stockpile it by any means, but it's just a thought. But like I said, if you already have it, I don't think we need to do stockpiles.
I don't think there's anything other than wipes, to be honest. I don't, I'm not sure that I've ever seen any Lysol or any other disinfectant spray available. I mean, you can ask me, but I haven't seen any.
Okay, I know at my, you know, my work, we have spray that is specific for the coronavirus, and you have to spray it and wait three minutes for it to kill all the germs and things, and then you wipe it off. So that's where my mind was going, was a spray like that. I can't imagine it being cheap because it's such a hot commodity right now with everybody wanting it. But eventually, you know, like I said, hopefully we can get back in there and have meetings and be able to clean and sanitize when we leave. So that was my question. I'm not sure where they purchased it from, I don't know the cost of it. But, you know, you can even spray it on cloths and wipe down the interior of cars, obviously, if they're... I wouldn't probably do your cloth seats or anything. But keyboards, things like that, you can, that's what we use to wipe all of that stuff down. So just a thought.
I know some people that... I'll give them a call tomorrow and try to find out what it is. If you'd like me to get the name, maybe find out how much that would cost, forward it on to the trustees and Mr. Heiston and Mr. Holbrook, you know, all our family here so that we're all, maybe we can decide whether we want to use any of that money for that.
And it doesn't have to be that specific, you know, that brand-specific. If, you know, somebody knows one another school is using, or another entity, another police department, whatever, by all means, maybe look into those two, if you guys know of any others.
So I guess to kind of wrap this up, if anyone else has questions, I think that makes a ton of sense. I think we should, in my opinion, make a resolution. And, Mr. Heiston, the way I would try to form this somehow is that we prioritize 100% of our expenses that we look to incur within Germantown. And then beyond that, we prioritize either 50/50 or 33/33/33, if we have two or three entities, to split up to the time we exhaust the funds. And, Mr. Cross, I appreciate what you brought up. I just quickly was grabbing my packet and looking back through what I had on COVID. And it appears like we can only transfer to units of government. For instance, it lists a city, town, or school district specifically. I don't think the food bank would qualify, but that's definitely something, Mr. Heiston, you can look into to see if there's any more information. But I don't believe it would qualify. So my general thought right now is that we would go 50/50 after our expenses between Germantown and the school district. And for example, if we have $100,000 of leftover funds after exhausting all of our expenses, then we could spend up to 50 with Germantown and 50 with the school. Let's say Germantown only had $25,000, we'd pay $25,000 to each of them, that would leave another 50. You could take the remaining 50 and give it to the school if they had more expenses after that. That way, we're not trying to put one in front of the other. We do them equally up until the point where we've exhausted both of them. And that way, we try to use as much of the funds as possible. If anybody has any other entities, happy to discuss them as well.
Mr. Raymer, I don't want to mislead you at all. We have been specifically told that nonprofits are eligible for these sub-grants. But the use of the funds by that nonprofit or by any sub-grantee specifically has to be used for expenses over and above their normal operations that are specifically to address their coronavirus situation. So the food bank, I think, might very well qualify. The entity over in East Dayton that provides food, meals every day to people, I can't think of its name right offhand. But they would probably qualify too. There's probably lots of nonprofits out there who could qualify because they are doing whatever in excess in terms of cost to address how they deal with their constituency through the coronavirus. Locally, in Valley View School District, beyond our food pantries and perhaps Sunshine in a Bag, I doubt that there are very many entities that are doing anything above and beyond what they would normally do as it relates to coronavirus.
I guess that's the only other concern I would have, and honestly, I'm open. But I'd like the input, especially from folks like Mr. Cross that feel passionate about it. You know, is how do you prioritize one nonprofit versus another? I think he's pretty clear-cut on the school district, knowing that it's sitting right here within the jurisdiction. Same with Germantown. But beyond that, I want to be careful that we're not seeing as though we're not equally thinking through all the other opportunities beyond that.
I don't think we need to put a percentage on 50/50. I don't think that matters. It's whoever has the need, whoever comes to us first, to be honest. I don't see to lock ourselves into a 50/50 split when we can do it without any percentages breakdown, I think would be better off and easier for Mark and for us to distribute when we get to that point.
I know that some places locally around us are putting in air purification systems. I don't know if that is something, I know the police officers spend quite a bit of time in that building, so they can probably attest to whether that's something needed or not. But because it is cleaning the air, it is qualifying. If that's something at all that we would need, I don't have a clue about what the cost of that is. If that's something at all that, that we would need, I don't have a clue about what the cost of that is, though.
I would say Jeremy probably has a better idea of what that would cost than, than I would. If you wanted to go that route and it was cost efficient, I'd probably try to do something for the entire building. And if not their office as well, out in the road department. That's just my two cents.
Mr. Cross was wanting to have another comment, if that's okay.
Is that okay? Can you hear me?
Yes, very good, Mark.
No, I, I think again, I kind of have to agree with Jake. I, I would, I would kind of hate to put percentage limits on that because it's going to make it much more difficult for you. On the other hand, I think that, again, thinking outside the box for this is, is the way to go, you know? And, and some of the concerns about which nonprofits or which entities, I think would be best served if all three trustees, even if you have to have, have to have a special meeting, that, that approval would have to go through them for any money distributed. And even if you have to have a few special meetings to distribute the money, because we're talking about some pretty big funds. But again, I, I appreciate you thinking outside the box, two different nonprofits, because there's all kinds of nonprofits out there that could, could benefit. And, you know, if the money is just going to go back to the state, certainly it would be beneficial to give it out to local, local, you know, nonprofits or whatever that can utilize it. So just my two cents. Thank you.
The process that we would follow is to return whatever we have not appropriated or in this case, subgranted to someone else by either October 15th or November 20th. And what will happen at that point is the county will redistribute all those funds to other entities who might have used up all their funds. So if, for example, German Town at this point doesn't need money, if, when I talk to them, they still have a chance to go back, get more money from the county after unused funds from just other townships or, or cities or libraries return their funds back to the county. Now what happens when the county sends it to the state? I presume the same process happens where they distribute it to counties that might have more need than Montgomery County. But that I'm not certain of.
I was just looking forward, guys. The October meeting will be on October 12th, just to put that into perspective.
I believe the October meeting is going to actually be on the 13th because October 12th is Veterans Day.
But we would need to let the entities know prior to then so that they can allocate the money by the 15th. Is that correct or no?
Absolutely. Three entities needs to return whatever they have that's not appropriated to the county by the deadline in this, as it now stands, October 15th.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Is anyone interested in, if there's, well, certainly we can have more discussion, but if there is no more discussion, is anyone interested in introducing a resolution?
I appreciate the comments, Mr. Stubbs, and about the percentages. Not meant to make this complex. Definitely meant to make it to where we do it in some kind of manner that's relatively fair. The, what I would say, and again, for debate, and then we can wrap this up, is I would propose prioritizing German Town and Valley View before anything further. And then we can distribute the funds further to local nonprofits as seen fit. That piece is, is a little bit tough because we just started talking about that tonight. The other piece we've talked for the last couple of months. And so we need to decide how we would want to do that and to whom we would want to do that.
Mark, is that some, I'm sorry, Mr. Houston, is that something where we decide this evening to do Valley View and German Town? And then if we get those additional funds, we relook at this and adjust if, if needed or if we would like?
We can go in any direction that you and the other trustees would like to do, Mrs. Reed. But that is certainly one way we could do it. And I work with Valley View and German Town to see what additional needs they have. Report back to you. We can either schedule a special meeting or if the deadlines get extended, we can revisit it on October 13th. Whatever direction you would like to go, I'm willing to work with.
Most sense because my understanding is this, the school district has well in excess to cover this first batch of funds. If we get an additional batch, I think that's where we could have an ability to, to spread the wealth a little bit more per se. So we can kind of play it by year if we get the additional funds and if the deadline gets extended and then we can allocate the additional funds at next meeting. If, if it doesn't get extended, we'll probably have to have a special meeting if we want to reach out to additional nonprofits. I guess at this point I'll go ahead and, and propose a, a resolution to, to allocate the, the excess COVID funds beyond the German Township expenditures related to COVID expenses to German Town and Valley View's local school district.
I will second that.
I guess within that resolution, Mr. He said, should I have announced that we're willing for you or happy for you to negotiate those monies and give you the authority as well to, to determine how that money should be seen fit and set up what you called a subgrant with those local municipalities or school district.
First of all, what's, we're going to name this Resolution 2020-20. And to answer your question, the more authority you can give me, the greater chance I have of being able to accomplish your goals without having to have a special meeting between now and October. So if you will grant me the authority to, to sign a subgrant agreement with each entity, that, that would be very helpful. If you would also grant me the authority to determine the amount of funds to go to each entity, that would be very helpful. If, if, I know, Mr. Raymer, you said you would prefer this not be done as an advance. And I don't have a problem with just limiting, limiting the subgrant to a reimbursement basis. But if you can, if we specify that, then we know exactly how that's going to be done. The more authority and the more specific instructions you give me that, that achieves your goals, the better. So if you wish to add some things to your original introduction of Resolution 2020-20, then we'll see if Mrs. Reed will accept those amendments to the resolution.
All right, let me see if I can.
There is a comment on the chat, if you want me to review that before you guys proceed. It looks like Mr. Jacoby has brought up that some service clubs like the Lions and Rotary have depleted their funds. Would they be included for consideration in clubs like that? The local, you know?
Mr. He said, you're.
I'm sorry. Let's try this again. I can address this specifically for the German Town Lions Club because I am the Secretary of the Club. We have not had any expenses related to COVID needs. What we have had is a significant reduction in our revenues. But unfortunately, the federal government was very specific. The CARES Act money cannot be used to replace revenue that was lost because of dealing with and being in, in this COVID environment. It can only be used for expenses specifically related to COVID. Providing items related to COVID. So I don't think there's anything the German Town Lions Club could, could receive that would be used at this point in time. My guess is it would be the similar situation for the Rotary. Mr. Jacoby is a Lion, and so I'm sure that's what made him think of that. And I appreciate that question very much.
All right, I'm going to take another shot at butchering this resolution. So I'd like to propose Resolution 2020-20 to give Mr. Heston the authority to negotiate the spend of our COVID funds that's in excess of the German Township expenses that have been granted to date. Any funds that haven't been granted to date will be discussed at a future meeting, either a special meeting or the next scheduled trustee meeting. And those funds can be used for German Town, German Town or Valley View Local School District.
Mr. Raymer. Grant maybe to sign the sub.
Yes, we will also grant you the authority to sign those subgrant agreements.
I think that covers everything that I was looking for. Oh, do you want to specify it to be done on a reimbursement basis only?
Yes, on a reimbursement basis only. Thank you.
Let me just check my notes, make sure we've covered every, every aspect. Okay, I will be, you've given me authority to determine the amount. Okay, reimbursement only. Yep, I think I've covered everything I think I would need to work with this first 39,000. And I'm assuming that Mrs. Reed will accept these additions to the resolution. I think we're ready to have a discussion. Mrs. Reed, are you accepting?
Yes, I will second that.
Okay, whatever discussion the three of you would like to have prior to a vote. Not seeing any of you unmute. I think we're probably ready to vote on Resolution 2020-20. Mr. Raymert.
Aye, in favor.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
2020-20 Resolution is approved. Thank you very much. I know that was a difficult discussion. Now, the next thing on my list, because I'm not done, unfortunately. We every year have to pass a resolution to accept the amounts and rates as determined by the County Budget Commission and to authorize the necessary tax levies and to certify them back to the county auditor. As I said, this is a resolution we pass every year. And once you pass this resolution tonight, it will be, I will sign it and return it to the auditor. It has to be back to them by November 2nd. And in the packet I sent to you, I did send you the resolution template that I received from the auditor's office as well as the 2021 property tax details and the estimate of the local government fund revenues for 2021. When you, whoever makes this resolution, it will be Resolution 2020-21, perfect number.
I will make Resolution 2020-21.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion of Resolution 2020-21?
I, I do have a quick question, Mark. I, I, I'm obviously not familiar with this before, haven't seen it before. I think I understand it to some degree, but only having received it yesterday, I haven't had the time to investigate in a lot of detail. Is there anything significant that you would want to call out this different year over year that, that we should be aware of? That you may have noticed?
No, there is nothing. This looks very similar to what we received for 2020.
Okay, I assume all the, the mileage rates are the same. It's just the dollar amounts have changed slightly.
Yes, I, what, what will happen the following year is, because I don't think this includes any of the revaluation that we're going through currently. But then the following year, this, I believe I reported last month, a 13% average increase in the unincorporated part of German Township in property values. Some of that will get reflected in next year numbers.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we will go ahead and vote on Resolution 2020-21. Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Raymert.
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
2020-21 Resolution has been approved. Every year, the trustees pass a resolution in the September meeting, I think typically, to certify the, onto the 2020 tax assessment for our delinquent tax trash bills. Any trash bill with an amount owed in delinquency over $150. And I, once approved, this list will be sent to the county auditor to be attached as a tax lien on each property. And the submission of these, this information, this resolution has to go to the county auditor by October 1st. In the packet I sent you, I said the amount was, I gave you the amount. It has actually changed slightly because we had someone come in today and make a payment. So the new amount in the resolution that you're going to approve tonight to certify over to the auditor to be added to the tax lien is $20,000, $20,043.88. So this would be Resolution 2020-22.
I'll introduce Resolution 20-22. A resolution to authorize the assessment of property owners who are delinquent as to waste disposal service charges pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 505.33.
And the amount in that, I'm not sure whether you said that, Mr. Stubbs, is $20,043.88.
$20,043.88, yes.
And what Mr. Stubbs is reading is the language from last year's resolution. It will be identical language for this year. Is there a second to Resolution 2020-22?
I will second.
Any discussion of the resolution? You're ready to vote, Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will get that finalized and sent to the auditor, county auditor. Okay, the next thing on my list. We fi, we have finally received the final report from the Auditor of State for the agreed upon procedure review that was performed back in June for the years of 2018 and 2019. This is a public document available for review on the Auditor of State's website. And as such, I would like to request that the trustees approve posting a hyperlink on the township's website so that any of our township residents can simply click on that hyperlink and go directly to read the report on the Auditor of State website.
Did you say you needed a motion for that, Mr. Houston?
I think that could be by a motion.
Okay, I will make that motion to put the hyperlink on the township's website so our citizens can easily access the auditor's site.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Was that Mr. Stubbs? I think.
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion of this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. We will get that hyperlink posted on the website. And I think this is great for having this out there, complete transparency, where everyone can see what a good job my predecessor did. But also, you know, there are some suggestions, and I think that's great that it'll be out there for people to read. One of the things that I sent you was information that the Ohio Deferred Compensation Program has recently added a new feature to their offerings, and that is a Roth 457 option. We currently have three employees here at the township who take advantage of the existing pre-tax deferrals. But this would be a post-tax, similar to any kind of Roth IRA or Roth 401K that you would find in a private business. The entities such as our township can voluntarily offer that. We are not required to. But if we choose to, we can offer a post-tax Roth 57 option to our employees. And the way to do that would be to execute a new employer adoption agreement. And if you would be interested in offering this option to our employees, not just the three current ones, but to every employee, of course, we will need a resolution which would be 2020-23, authorizing me to execute the appropriate documents. Is there any interest in offering this to our employees?
Is that something our employees have expressed interest in?
I haven't even shared that with them as an option, except those who are copied on my report for this meeting. So I don't know the answer to your question.
Okay. Can we wait a month on this one and see if there's any employees that would be willing to take or wanting to take advantage of this? And then we'll discuss it next month?
I can send an email out to the employees and ask for feedback. If that's what you would prefer, that's not a problem.
I see at least one employee nodding yes, so if we could discuss this further at the next meeting, I think that would be in the best interest for all of us.
Okay, well, let me do that. Let me reach out to all the employees, ask for feedback, and then I can tell you the results of that feedback for the October meeting.
Thank you.
All right, let me make my notes here. Okay. I simply gave you, this next item is simply information that I found interesting. I believe I had previously told you about, but I've not talked about it in an open meeting. Mark Keener, back in August, sent me a link to a blog post on August 9th by Alexander Sharp of RestructuringDayton.org. And his subject was "How Public Are Public Records?" In his blog post, he specifically discussed Germantown ship several times, referencing information that I had sent to him on August 6th in response to his public records request to the township on August 5th. If anyone is interested in reading this blog, and it really is interesting, The next item. Senior Citizen Director Chinoa Ayersman spent a couple days at the township during August, helping Lori prepare trash mailings. And I want to thank the City of Germantown for allowing us to borrow Chinoa during this time at no cost to the township. It was very helpful, and I believe Mrs. Rohrbach appreciated the help. It saved her a lot of effort. Next, I attended the Montgomery County Township Association Virtual Meeting on August 19th. And I will be attending the Montgomery County Township Association Fiscal Officers Virtual Meeting on Wednesday, sorry, tomorrow. Tomorrow I will be attending. And then again, I mentioned earlier on Friday, I'll be attending the OTA webinar on CARES Act Funds. First National Bank of Germantown will be at the Township Hall on October 7th to test their ability to communicate with their corps from our building. Back on October 15th of 2018, the trustees approved the use of the Township Hall Meeting Room by the bank to run their operations in the event of a disaster at the bank. And this test is a requirement of the bank's regulators. So there's nothing that the township needs to do other than have that room available for them that day. And my last item concerns the 2020 census. The final day for completing the census is September 30th. There is no extension. There was talk of extending beyond September 30th. That's not going to happen. I encourage all township residents to complete the census. As I noted earlier when I discussed the potential for the additional CARES Act award, federal and state funds received by the township are often determined based on population. And completing the census will only take a few minutes, and I feel is an obligation that every citizen should take seriously. And with that statement, I am done. Thank you very much, Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. Chief, I believe it's up to you now.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Let's see, first of all, national night out. Typically, it happens in August. Germantown ship has always had ours for many years now on the alternate date, which is in October. But due to COVID-19 slash coronavirus, we will not be having a national night out this year. We enjoy it. It's one of the opportunities we get to interact with our residents. But we don't want to be a lightning rod for any... If that was... The Technical Advisory Committee held September 10th at 10:30 a.m. I attended it. The discussion centered around the 2021 budget model that the county proposed. When the group was asked to ratify the budget model so it could be forward to the Emergency Communications Policy Commission or ECPC, many in attendance, including myself, balked. Since we had not received a copy of it, they had sent a copy out and ratified it by voting by email. So September 24th, I will also be attending it. If Mr. He stood, if the two of you individually could kind of look through that, if you see anything that may be beneficial to me to take to the ECPC meeting, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. He, and Chief Anzick. I just quickly, obviously, just got this, and it's 10 pages, pretty detailed stuff. The overarching comment I would have initially is it looks about like a 5% full budget increase year over year from '22 beyond, which looks relatively substantial, especially with the dollar amounts that we're talking about. They were able to withstand, you know, only a 2% increase and then a 1% budget increase next year. So I'm just a little curious why the 5% is needed for the outgoing years, which obviously my initial impression will trickle back to us, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess what I'll do is I'll send a note to Mr. He, and just see if he has any other thoughts or whatever. Maybe we can get a summarized, you know, thought over to you, and I'll copy, obviously, Mrs. Reed and Mr. Stubbs. But this is just one of the things, I don't have a lot of, you know, obviously, experience with it. It's just a little tough to understand without further detail why they would see such an increase in the budget, you know, year over year.
I understand. Next is the police clerk job. Of the five applicants, all of them passed and moved on to interviews. One applicant pulled herself out of the process prior to her interview, and the remaining four were interviewed. And that's where we stand at this time. One other thing, I spoke with Mrs. Reed today, and I see some of the people whose names came up in our discussion about shooting in the township. And I want to make sure that everybody knows that you can shoot in the township, but we like people to report it because we want to review how firearms are being used. Are they safety? Do they have a proper backstop? So we don't mind those calls. Also, when we get calls, any call, we do reports on them. And that is documentation that the trustees may need in the future, whether it be this for trustees or 10 years from now. You could go back and get the records that we create today. So if you have any gunshots near you in the township, give us a call. I want to make sure that everybody's being safe and shooting with proper backstops. And last, I dropped the ball on this. I need a retro declaration of excess to be sold by auction at the GovDeals. And that one item is a 2008 Ford Crown Vic. It just slipped through the cracks on me, and I agree, or I had it posted on GovDeals, but I failed to have it declared by the board. And I understand that that is just kind of happened with this, or to me at this time. So I would like to ask the board to declare the 2008 Ford Crown Victoria that we just took out of service as excess so that it can be sold on GovDeals.
We will approve that excess as a Resolution Number 2020-23.
I'm sorry, that's 2010, not 2008.
I'll introduce Resolution 2020-23, a resolution to retroactively sell the 2010 Crown Vic.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Is there any discussion on Resolution 2020-23?
Hope you got a lot of money, chief. Just kidding.
I would just add, there was no malicious intent. It was just an accident between Lori being off and last month's meeting, total error on myself and Mr. Anzick, and it's being taken care of right now.
I appreciate it. We obviously understand no malice. Thank you for letting us know and being transparent.
If you could, please make sure that it says "declare excess."
I will make sure, Lori.
Thank you.
That was Mrs. Rohrbach speaking.
And that concludes my report.
We need a vote on the resolution.
We do. Is there any more discussion on Resolution 2020-23? Seeing none, let's go ahead and take a vote. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-23 is adopted.
Okay, and that concludes my report.
All right, Reed Superintendent, Mr. Holbrook.
Let's have a few items this evening. The first one is to give you an update on the Germantown ship's electric generation. I talked to you at the last meeting about switching from IGS to Dayton Power and Light for our electric generation contractor. And I have switched all that over. One of the questions that Mr. He stood had asked was, were the weather sirens on IGS or DPNL always apparently been on power and light? Though they did not need to be changed. The only two was the general offices facility and the road department. So I did get confirmation from DPNL on that change, so we hopefully will see it by the next billing cycle. And just to review, that should save us about 34% on the generation side only, not the transmission of our electric for the township. So the second item was, here in the last couple of years, I've taken it upon myself to go out and solicit pricing for liquid propane for the township. As you might be aware, or might not, the township offices facility has a thousand gallon underground tank out front, and the road department has a 500 gallon above ground tank beside the building. So I got four prices from four separate propane suppliers. The first one, which was the lowest bid, was Airheart Propane, who we had last year. Last year's price was $1.19 per gallon. This year, they quoted us $1.09, which is a 10 cent savings over last year. The second one I got was from Collet Propane at $1.19 a gallon, and then Miami Valley Propane at $1.37 a gallon, and LNS Propane at $1.199 a gallon. Like I said, we have done business with Airheart last year. I didn't think we had any problems that I was aware of, either with the delivery side or the billing side. So I would recommend to the board that they purchase the propane for the 2020-21 heating season for $1.09 per gallon through Airheart Propane. And we will be entering into a contract that would lock us into that price. And basically, the contract says that we would purchase our heating LP gas through them for that predetermined amount of time, which was, like I said, the 2020-21 season, which I think ends in August of next year.
Would that need to be a resolution, Mr. Houston?
We will, Resolution 2020-24.
All right, I will introduce Resolution 2020-24 to enter into an agreement with Airheart Propane, or to purchase the propane for $1.09 a gallon. And I believe I also need to authorize Jeremy to complete that contract. Is that correct, Jeremy?
Yeah.
On behalf of the board.
On behalf of the board. Sorry, I left that out.
Is there a second to Resolution 2020-24?
I will second.
Mr. Raymert beat you, Mr. Stubbs.
Perfect, that's fine.
Any discussion of Resolution 2020-24?
Just, we've used them in the past, I think, a couple of times in the last five or six years, no issues. So... That's all.
If there's no more discussion, we will go ahead and vote on Resolution 2020-24. Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-24 is adopted.
Thank you very much. Just FYI, that estimated savings, they estimated our annual gallons used. Now, obviously, that is very dependent on weather, as approximately 4,000 gallons a year. So that's, we're looking at a $400 savings over last year and from the next lowest bid amount. So I think that's kind of nice that we got a lower price than we did last year. So the only other items I had under "other" is just kind of keep you up to date, continuing to mow the cemeteries and patching the roads. Also, did another round of mowing of the road right away since the last meeting. And one thing I just remembered that I apologize that I did not put on the report is that the contractors have completed our chip seal within the township, part of Starry Night, part of Moyer, part of Baden, and a couple sections on Pudding Bag, and also a section of North Boomershine. I think I provided you that list at the last meeting. So other than that, everything looked good as far as the chip seal was concerned. I know I did get a couple of calls from residents, not really upset, but concerned about the loose stone. And I assured them that with time, you know, we get a couple of good rains, you know, the dust will settle down, any loose stone that's still on the surface will get kind of kicked off to the burn. The, any loose stone that's still on the surface will get kind of kicked off to the burn. And hopefully sooner than later, it will kind of calm down with any, any stone that's been picking up in tires. So um, the two people I talked to were very receptive, receptive, very understanding. So um, really wasn't any issues with that at all. So with that, that's all I have this evening.
Uh, Mr. Cross has um a comment or a question. Can I unmute him?
Sure.
All right.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
First of all, I'm glad that you survived laying that asphalt last Thursday. That looked like a terrible job. So is there any indication that the, the county is going to uh pave the Creek Road Hill? I mean, going down there on a bike is a brayden.
They, they do not make me aware of their paving schedule. Um, I can reach out to them and see if they have a tentative schedule on when they might pave that. Um, I know that they've been contacted on at least two different occasions that I'm aware of during the Twisted Pretzel and I think one other time outside of any kind of bike race, but just a general information call to say, hey, it's getting pretty rough. You know, we have a lot of cyclists or runners and so forth. But I can reach out to them and let you know if they have any kind of uh future schedule of when they might pave that section of creek.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it. So the, the chip seal that was done on Boomershine south of 25, was that the same company that did it, you know, the other spots or was it county?
Different, different, different contractors did this year's work than did last year's work.
Okay, I guess that chip seal on Boomershine is very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought everything turned out real well. I don't think there was an excessive amount of, of stone or liquid. Um, everything seemed to, to uh really bite in good. So I'm not expecting any problems like we had last year.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Uh, Jeremy, I do have a question. Um, the mud lick, is there like an update for the public on the chips and all that? I've had a couple of people ask me.
Um, uh, update as far as?
Uh, you know how it was like seeping through and you guys had to put more and more gravel down and such?
Then the contractor came out and rolled in a substantial amount more of it. So I'm hoping that that takes care of it.
Okay, yeah, I don't.
They've pretty much done what they're gonna do. So
Okay.
Hopefully we don't have that problem in the future or in next year. It'll dry out enough in the meantime to not bleed back through like it did this year. So
Awesome. Yeah, I couldn't remember um if you had a report on that last month or not. So I told them I would touch base this month.
Yeah, if they have any questions, you're more than welcome to give them my office number and they call me direct and I can give them as much information as I have.
Definitely will do.
I do have one question for Jeremy. Uh, it's not really a question. I had a resident point out a site distance problem. It's not necessarily our problem of Weaver and Manning uh coming from town towards the, towards uh, towards Manning. Uh, in the mornings, there's some weeds growing up on the side of the road. Do you know who the contact person would be at the county to deal with that?
I will contact them first thing in the morning about that. I'll make a note right now. Um, we get that that complaint, I call it complaint, the uh, you know, people say there's sight distance problems there and there is, and that is the county's portion of Manning that the problem is on. Um, I will let them know about it and see if they can send somebody down there to mow down uh that section of Manning. I guess it would be to the west of Weaver.
Right.
Yeah, I will let them know first thing in the morning.
Thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, first, I just want to thank Jeremy for all of his hard work in getting, uh, looking into the electric generation, changing all of that. I know that does take some time to do um anything that's a cost savings to the township. I know we can use all the money that we can or try to cut costs any, any way we can. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate him looking into the propane. I did that one year and it is time and seeming to contact all those people to get the bids and everything. So I appreciate him doing that as well. But go on. Mr. Houston kind of took one of mine. I also wanted to thank Shinoa and the city for sending her to, to help us. Like he said, it was of no cost to us. Um, and any
Mrs. Reed.
I'm sorry, what?
You forgot.
Got it. Let me give it to you now. Sorry.
No big deal. Mine's super short. Um, so for the old news that I have, um, just to touch base, the web uh, web information, um, it has not been updated yet. Um, and then as I was sitting here, I also wrote a note to myself. Um, is there like any possible, like should I maybe take that over? Um, I know Lori typically is the one that takes care of that, but at least for uh the zoning portion. Um, I'm more than happy to take that over. I know it's going to have to happen at some point anyway.
Um, I think we talked about that.
Yeah.
And you were going to either look into a program or learn HTML. The, the site that we use now is all HTML language and you said you didn't know that. Also, the update for the audio, that's slated for tomorrow. All this tax lien, all that has to be researched. So I was spending two to three hours a day working on that. So um, since that's over with, the audio files will get uploaded tomorrow. But if you were to take over your zoning part, um, you were going to look at either getting a, a zoning or a program to write so you don't have to write HTML or learn that. So I don't know. I never heard back which way you wanted to go. You can certainly take that up, the, the um, the zoning part. Um,
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm fine with it either way. It does, I just know it has to happen eventually. Um, so and as far as the information updated um on that, um, I know you've been working on all of that other stuff. Uh, it was just like uh my contact information. Um, like my uh work cell phone, uh, stuff like that, just to make it a little bit easier for the public to contact me, um, because I'm not always here in the office. Um, but it's not a big deal. Uh, I just wanted to touch base on that.
Yeah, I hadn't, I didn't know you wanted that on there.
Oh.
You, yeah, you need to send me an email. Tell me what you want on there.
I will send you one either tonight or tomorrow morning.
Yeah, because I don't make any changes to your site without you specifically saying I need this changed.
Yep. All right. And then um just a couple of other items on my report, uh, just so everybody is up to speed. Uh, next week, uh, 9:22, the BZA will meet to continue the U Abundant Life Tapernacle. Um, trustees, you do not have to necessarily be there for that. Um, uh, but if you did want to tune in for that, it is not something that you guys will be seeing, uh, because that is just through the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, and then of course, on October 1st, uh, the Board of Trustees will have a public hearing for case number 2020 dash 35 Z as in zebra, C as in cat. Um, that case was heard by the zoning commission just a couple of weeks ago. And I will be getting you guys that packet here this week, uh, so you guys can review all that and answer any questions that you may receive. Um, for that, for that meeting on 10/1, there is potentially going to be a location change uh just because of the uh press that this case has received. Uh, so please, for anybody listening, please check, check the newspaper. Uh, if you have Facebook, check Facebook. Uh, and I will also be posting it on the Township Hall window. Uh, so feel free to stop by Township Hall anytime to look for those updates. Um, and then I, if and when there is an update, I will also send that um out uh to Mr. Houston and uh Mrs. Rohrbach to send that out to the delivery list. Um, trying to get that information out any way possible. Uh, as far as permits for the last month, um, we've had one new house, three residential additions, one shed, one agricultural exemption and four pending. And other than that, that's all I have.
So sorry that I skipped over you. I apologize. I guess I was just in a hurry to to make a little, I apologize. I'm sorry. Um, like I said, I just want to thank Jeremy and thank Shinoa from the city for coming up and helping at no cost to the township. Um, we appreciate that. Uh, the, I got, I received some pictures or saw some pictures online of Officer Dylan Jones with a canine out doing some activities, I guess, in Franklin outreach to the community and they were really good, good photos. It looked like everyone was having a good time. And so it's always nice to see um our officers involved with the community and outside. I think that was in Franklin, like I said, and they had fire trucks and everything there. So that was, that was great to see. Now, I don't know. Okay, I'm, I only saw the pictures of Mr. Jones. I was actually not there. So um, so yes, Mr. Birch was also there. So thank him for attending and spending his time there. Um, senior center update. So I, I just, many of you are aware, the senior center has been shut down for quite a while with this coronavirus going on. But currently they are slated to be able, have the ability to reopen on October 15th. Now that is with a lot of um restrictions, as you can imagine. So the city is still trying to weed through those restrictions and see if they're able to meet all of the uh demands that, that come with reopening. Last I had heard, I think they're really going to try to, to meet those demands and to get open on the 15th. I don't believe it's going to look like it used to look or be full days or anything. Um, I think their goal is to start out small, maybe do partial days and then work, work up from there. So they are uh going to try out some. They, they learned during this pandemic that they didn't have a list to reach out to their um seniors that visited the senior center. So they're going to try to do a, a membership starting in 2021 so they can get everybody's information, phone number, address, what have you, so that hopefully this doesn't happen. But if it does, they have a way to contact all of their, their members that come in. So I, I thought that was a good idea to, to stay in contact. Um, let me make sure. We have not had a fire oversight meeting, actually, since I have been on the, been on the fire oversight board. Um, hopefully we do at some point, but with the coronavirus, it's kind of put a, a hold on that. I believe everyone is using the new um fire building as, as well as the police. And it looks great from, you know, what I can see of it. I know we have some concerns from some residents about the uh flagpole. And so hopefully we can address those um with the city of the flagpole location. I, I should have preface that. Uh, police interviews were done on the 8th and the 10th and um I've mentioned several times, I wanted to be part of those interviews. I unfortunately was um not informed of those interviews and so a little disheartened about that. Um, hopefully we can keep those lines of communication open and uh be involved in future, future things um for the township. I believe.
Hey, I have a comment on that.
Yes.
If you were to be involved, it would have been a public meeting and we're not allowed to meet in person. So per your request, so how could we have held an interview?
Well, Mr. Stubbs, we've actually done that um both times. I've said this multiple times for our zoning person. Uh, I realize we were not coronavirus, but we held an open meeting and according to um executive, in order for us to go into executive session, that is, I believe G1. We, we've done it before. So I don't see why if we've done it before, we couldn't do it again.
You didn't allow our board to have in-person meetings? So how can we have an in-person meeting? We can't have an in-person meeting. We can't have an interview.
So I have to disagree with you a little bit. I, you say I am not allowing it. I believe that it would be very difficult. I know with me, we were with myself wearing a mask in front of my students. It is very difficult to hear my students across the room. As well as I think right now, we have what, 510, 50, we have 20 people on. I don't believe that we are able to socially distance 20 people in our township hall. Um, is, which is unfortunate. I think it would be great if we could go back in person. Uh, what, with this mask mandate right now, I think it would be hard to hear these, the people talking with a mask. If that is something that you would like to bring up and have another discussion about, Mr. Stubbs, I, I am not opposed to, to readdressing that. Actually, the way that our wording is right now um is not, uh, needs to be updated anyways. Uh, it was brought to my attention that the way that it was passed for us to do these WebEx meetings is if we were at a level three, I believe it is, which at the time when we passed it, you only had to wear masks if you were level three and above. Well, since then, at that time, Governor Dewine has now said it's a mask mandate statewide. It doesn't matter what level you're at. Um, so with that, if we dropped down to a level two, we would have in-person meetings, but we would still run into that mask issue. But Mr. Stubbs, if it is something that, that you would like to, Mr. Raymer, you and myself to discuss again, I'm, I'm not opposed to having that discussion about if you think in-person meetings, if, if it is feasible. Do you believe in-person meetings are feasible, Mr. Stubbs, to do that?
I believe you could hybrid, hybrid, yes. In-person for the, like the school board does. We should be in-person and if people want to come, they can come. If they want to log on, they can log on.
Would, what, how would you recommend uh with a mask? So would we just not wear them? I mean, I'm really just trying to figure out how we, how we go about doing this.
Uh, I would suggest watching the next school board meeting, which I think was two hours ago. But uh Valley View is finding a way to do it. Why can't we?
Can you tell me what that meeting looks like, Mr. Stubbs? That's what I'm asking.
I know they're in-person. I don't know how they're in-person. Um, I had football tonight. I went straight to the cemetery and I can, went straight to this meeting. So how that view is doing it, I don't know, but I know their, their board physically meets in-person.
Okay. Um, with that, Mr. Stubbs, so when you're saying the board, would that just be Mr. Raymert? Um, you and myself and Mr. Houston? And then uh Mr. Anzik and Mrs. Sewell and Mr. Holbrook would be virtual?
You asked me how Valley View is doing it, so I just told you how Valley View is doing it.
I, I feel like uh we had two topics going on. One is, is related to the interview process. And, and I think it's a fruitful conversation for us to have really quickly because this is new for me. I'm, I'm being onboarded and and we're going to have a discussion. I'm going to allow Mr. Cross to uh, you know, address everyone about a question he had for me that I think merits discussion around the BZA and, and a replacement there. Um, it's same kind of situation here. We have with uh Chief Anzik in a, an open position he has and and as Mrs. Reed has said, something with the open position that we've done in the past with zoning. And so I, I think it's fair force just to, let's, let's compartmentalize that discussion and have it is do we feel like it's important for all the trustees or at least multiple trustees to be involved in any hiring? Um, do we want to prioritize which departments or which types of hires? We have multiple trustees if ever. Um, I think it's worth a discussion that we can set forward and right, have right here in front of the township and and kind of set that aside. So going forward, we know uh who's to be involved with interviews and, and we don't have miscommunications or whatever in the future. I, I'm I'm actually okay with it being um one uh trustee who's over that department and uh, Mr. Reed, absolutely want to hear your perspective of more. Um, but what, as I've shared with Chief and Lori, is I met with them a couple of weeks ago. You know, my current employer, we have multiple managers meet and even though they're not familiar with the specific role, they're looking for qualities and attributes of of good employees and uh, you know, we're all part of this township. And I think it makes sense that we have diverse uh people interviewing and, and listening to the people they're speaking to and looking to be receptive for the types of qualities we should have in any type of role. And it doesn't need to have an extensive amount of information about the specific role they're being interviewed for. So uh, I can see both sides of this. I think we can have a quick and fruitful discussion on this and then going forward, there'll be less miscommunication on it.
When there's been a police officer hired in the past or a police position, it's been the police, the trustee over police and the chief. Um, the, Dr. Cross was over police for four years. Uh, so he could speak to it better as this is my first year over police. When we hired uh Haley, the interview process was Mr. Mark Keener and myself were the only people that interviewed. Um, and that was because at the time I was the department head. And that was because at the time I was the department head over zone, or I was the trustee over zoning. And there is no department head for zoning. And that's why Mr. Mr. Keener at the time had sat in with me as well. I'd also like to point out the German Township is Kalia certified and there's a process that had to be followed in that, in that. And, and we had to follow the steps to continue our certification in the police. And Joe can speak more to that. But the, I mean, we did what policy has laid out in the past. As I emailed Ms. Reed and all of you, if the, if it was a road department person, Ms. Reddick Reed would be the one doing the interview. And with Jeremy, if they were replaced or adding a road department person. At this point, if we hired a new zoning person, it would be Tyler and potentially Mr. Houston. However, Mr. Raymert felt comfortable. So we followed past procedure and that's what's been done in the past and that I hope is what's done in the future. There's a reason there's one trustee over these departments. And, and we should take full advantage that someone has a little more, maybe potentially more knowledge over the department they have and go with that in the future.
Yes, sorry. I muted, not muted the wrong direction.
I don't mean to disagree with Mr. Stubbs. However, based on the Personnel Manual of the Township, I don't even need him there. It says a prospective employee shall be presented by the department head to the Board of the Trustees in a regular meeting. There's no guidance on who I use in an interview. I could have took three residents and asked them to interview. When I had the sergeant promotion, I didn't even sit in on the interviews because I didn't think that was fair. I had law enforcement experts from outside German Township come in and interview each candidate. So I don't mean to disagree with Mr. Stubbs, but based on the policy or the Personnel Manual, I could have done me and, and the sergeant and just presented the name to the trustees based on what it says. To go on, it says a resolution prepared by the Township Clerk Treasurer shall be passed by the Board of Trustees making the appointment after they are sworn into their new position to begin on the date set forth in the resolution. And that is the only thing about appointing of applicants. And I shall shut my mic now.
Thanks for the clarification.
The only thing that I was going to add to what Mr. Stubbs was saying is it was him and Mr. Keener from Mrs. Sewell's or when they hired Mrs. Sewell, we had, I'm just going to say a very limited number of applicants for that. And so that kind of reared itself too, just having Mr. Stubbs and Mr. Keener. Prior to Mrs. Sewell, we had Mrs. Valerie Hill, who did a great job. And I believe, I, I know I sat in on several interviews. Mr. Cross could have as well. I honestly am not sure remember who was there. I know Mr. Stubbs was there with me at, at one point. I believe Mr. Keener may have also been there. So there has been, there, there was some precedent set before. And so when I have been there minus hiring police officers, it has been the two zoning positions where it was offered. I was on for one of them and offered for the second time. And so for it to change, which is still a little different, I guess, for me. I'm not sure why it is one way sometimes and not all the time, I guess, is what I'm getting at.
Could I address that?
Sure.
And I'm no expert in this area by any means. You know that. And police department have department heads. Department head. So you can't have a department head. And present it to the board and was under the board directly.
Haley, did you just unmute me and mute me again? It keeps going back and forth. So that's really it. If we want to set a precedence for it, I am fine with that. I just, if we do it that way, I would like to stick with that and not go back and forth if, if we need to address the Personnel Manual. Because at the end of the day, the, the citizens do vote for us. I know, I've gotten several calls recently and the, the buck kind of, I guess, stops with the, with the three trustees. I know Lori's job is amazing. She does a ton of work. She's kind of the eyes and ears, if you will, of the township. She's the, so a resident comes in, she's the first person they see or talk to on the phone if they, if they call a number. So she handles a lot. That's one of the reasons why I thought it was very important for her. I think she's been with the township over 20 years. So it's hard to say, well, we did that, that way 20 years ago. Because, you know, things change in 20 years. And so for at least my time here, we have obviously not hired for that position. We've only hired for the zoning position. So that's why I thought, since we had done it previously for the zoning, why not keep up that same precedent going forward? What is the downfall to it? And that's why when I voiced, you know, I would like to be involved, I also called the chief and asked him to be involved. And then was, was left out of the, the email chain of the date and times for those things. So I'm really, I was just disheartened. What's done is done, in my opinion, and such is life. So it's, it's unfortunate, but it, it's, it's what happened.
So now the, I think we come to a conclusion on that. The only question I'll have to follow up is, I totally understand the department head piece along with the trustee over that department. What, what about in a situation that we were to replace a department head? I mean, how would we see that with multiple trustees?
Are you asking opinions?
Well, if there's something in the personnel book, I'd love for Chief Anzik to go ahead and throw that out. But if not, I do think it's worth addressing just to make sure we're all clear.
I can only address when I'm being promoted from sergeant to assistant chief to chief. When I was, I was made assistant chief by the Board of Trustees at the recommendation of Chief Wilcox when he retired. And began the process of applicants for the, the chief of police position. I was one of the applicants. There were two. The trustee at that time over the police department and on interviews with us, I think at the time, the Clerk Treasurer, Bobby Rohrbach was in on it. Greg Hanahan was the trustee over the police department. And I think Scott Wydel was one of the interviewers. So they had an interview, but the trustee over the, the department they were interviewing for a department head was present. And Chad Gilbert was also present. So they interviewed me and then based on that, the trustee, Greg Hanahan, went to the board and presented my name to be hired as a department head. What I remember, of course, then, seven years ago now. So, but that kind of gives you a my knowledge in probably the last 30 years, I don't know how long Mr. Holbrook has been in his position. It's around 30 years. That's, I'm the last person to have been appointed the department head.
Clear enough. And I think there's some comment, I'll circle back to this later on this evening. But hopefully we won't have to worry about replacing the department head for several years to come. So we'll address that in the future.
All right. Do we, do we want to discuss having in-person meetings or changing our meeting setup? Since that was brought up?
If I recall correctly, the motion that was made a couple of meetings ago concerning this issue. The current situation we have is as long as we're in red or higher, we are meeting completely by WebEx. If we should drop down to orange or one of the lower categories below that, we would do in-person as well as WebEx. But I believe, Mrs. Reed, you are completely correct. We will have to be masked. And I am concerned without a sound system here in the room that we might not be heard. So if we want to consider acquiring some kind of a AV system that would allow us to be mic'd in the room as well as on WebEx, that would most likely qualify as a coronavirus expense.
Can I also make a comment about the in-person and online? So the zoning, the zoning boards have tried both in, completely in-person, completely remote and combined. And for the setup of the meeting, the recording of the meeting, people online and in-person being able to hear each other clearly. Whoever is participating in the meeting, like the board. So whatever the board is, if the board is all online or if the board is all in-person, that's great. So like if we did all of, like, all of you guys and all of us for the departments in-person and then all the visitors remote, that would work perfect. But if we tried to do a mix, that's where it gets a little, a little difficult. So I don't know if you guys want to take that into consideration also. And it looks like Mr. Cross has a comment also.
I don't know where that's, can you hear me now? Okay, so to, to expand on that a little bit, Haley, the last zoning commission meeting last Thursday, we had an in-person and online combination. We knew there was going to be a pretty big crowd, so we decided to have it at the United Methodist Church. At that time, we were able to social distance everybody. So everybody's chair was six feet apart, except if it was a couple, they were allowed to sit together. We mandated that everybody wore a mask and really we had no trouble with being heard. And I ran that meeting and my first, the first thing I said, can you hear me? And the people in the back could hear me. My wife was online to listen to the meeting. She didn't have much, any, really any trouble listening. So it is possible, but you have to have a big enough facility to be able to do that. Unfortunately, with the, with the township hall, you really don't have a big enough facility unless, you know, unless you only got five, maybe five people in the audience. The only thing I want to bring up, I called the Ohio, Ohio Department of Health Coronavirus Hotline last Saturday just to clarify something. And they, I asked them, if you have a public meeting and you can keep social distancing and everybody wears a mask, is that allowable? And she said, yes, there really isn't even any, any 10-person limit. The big thing is if you are inside, it doesn't matter where you are, whether you're in a big gym or you're in a tiny room, you have to wear a mask. So people need to get used to that. And again, Haley, I think we can attest, the zoning commission followed all the rules and it went fine because everyone was following the rules. You didn't have some people that didn't wear masks. Everybody came in wearing a mask. Most people used the hand sanitizer where they came in. So.
So the key, what I think I've discovered is the key is that the board members all need to be on the same, whether they're all virtual or all in-person. The board members need to be all in the same because when we do that, we can set a microphone up so that the board members can be heard online. And then they're able to hopefully be heard in-person anyways. So that is, that was the biggest issue was all of the board members being able to be heard by the public. And if we have one board member online, then there's no real good way to have them converse with the other board members.
Yeah, and luckily we had all five board members were present. So that was the advantage.
That's all that I had.
Yeah, so it is possible. And unfortunately with the township hall, it probably is not possible to have, you know, unless you're going to limit the number of people that come through the door and sit in the audience. Now, if, again, if you like, and, and that's what I think Haley is thinking about in the 10-1 meeting. Again, have it in the, in the Methodist Church lower level where we can spread out, where you can spread out, I should say. Because it's going to be your meeting, not ours. So do you think that, Haley? Like that's, it, it, it seemed to go fine and I, I didn't. But we did have a microphone at the podium that was, was picking up everything. And we were able to use a projector from the church that hangs from the ceiling. So everyone that was online, it's like you're seeing right now, was on the, was on a screen. So they, everybody knew who was actually there when they chimed in.
Yes, and one of the board members actually brought in a mic and video piece that I actually plugged into my computer, which I have not looked into it yet, but it didn't seem like it would be too awful expensive. And that way I turned the camera around so that the people online could see the board members. Almost as good as if they were in-person. And then that also had the mic on it, so they were able to hear the board members and the people presenting from the podium relatively well.
And that might be something the Cures Act would pay for, Haley.
And I'm not opposed to the board going in there. I guess my fear is how do you determine when the 10th person or, you know, gets cut off? Because if we do it in the zoning, or I'm sorry, the township hall, you're limiting the number that can be there with that six-foot socially distant criteria that is set in place. So again, I'm open to, to changing it if Mr. Raymert, Mr. Stubbs are interested in doing that. I have no problem doing so.
I'm happy to meet in-person as well. I guess my question would be, we have quite a good turnout tonight. I mean, any feedback from anybody from not just those that have spoken, but those that haven't, that have a strong perspective? I, I'm not sure I, I quite grasp the supreme benefit of being in-person. I, I did attend a commission meeting where I know it was very difficult because we didn't have a mic at a podium. And so when someone on the line spoke in through Haley's computer, it was hard for everyone else in the room to hear. So I know there are a lot of things to think through that way. Happy to, to think through them and, and try to put it in play, but what, what are we gaining? That's what I want to make sure as we put ourselves in some, some minor risk, if nothing else. One more quick anecdotal question. When was the last time we had 25 people in the room for a trustee meeting?
That's another thing that I've heard a lot from people on the board, people in the public, family members that tune in every now and then, is that we've had better turnout with people just calling and listening since we have that availability now than we, I've ever experienced in an in-person meeting. So that's great. I, I love that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Houston. You can go ahead.
Okay, since we started using WebEx at the April trustee meeting, we've actually had three trustee meetings where we have done in-person as well as using the WebEx. And I think all three went remarkably well. The first time was a little rough. It was June 1st. That was our first time to try to do that in a room with people here plus online. But by the time we got to St. John's Church for the two meetings later in June and on July 1st, I thought it worked very, very well to have the combination of both. And so going forward, once we can move back into the room, when things turn orange, going forward, once we can take our masks off, I still think for a complete openness to our residents of the township, we should continue to use WebEx as well as meet in-person.
I agree. I think the only times I know of this many people being in a meeting is when there was a hot button issue that they were very passionate about. This is not a regular, was not a regular number of attendees in our in-person meetings, so.
So it looks like Mark, Mr. Cross has another.
It's a tight title. Last time we had this many people was the gravel, gravel pit meeting last year.
Right, yeah. So, and then I also have a comment. Right, I also have a comment from Mr. Jacoby on the chat. He says ideally in the township meeting room, there would be a smart screen on each of the east and west walls with speakers. At least three cameras would be needed to cover the board members up front. Now, this is, you know, making it a little bit better than just the WebEx. Let's see. At least three cameras would be needed to cover the board members up front, the speaker at the podium and the audience. Where'd it go? Audience. Online visitors could be seen and speak from their. Uh, online visitors could be seen and speak from their square on the smart screens. There is a local technical person who could install all of this. My guess is we could do all of this for less than $2,500 to $3,000, possibly less. And him and I have also spoke about that briefly previously. And just that these meetings here are most likely here to stay.
Mr. Heaton, do you believe, I mean, going forward, I think Mr. Jacoby had some great ideas with putting a a board up in one of those maybe pull down, up and down ones like we have. I know we have one, but it's, I think, a little aged. I know, I think the last time we used it was for the gravel pit case. It's the only time I really well that auditor came. And I think that's only two times in the three years I've been here. So is that something adding an additional one or even getting a new projector? Because I know we've had some issues with that projector a few times when we've needed to use it. It's aged, it's kind of seen its years, that we could spend some of that coronavirus money on to try to update that infrastructure, if you will, to help us have these meetings better online to serve the community.
I mentioned earlier that I thought if we needed some kind of sound system, that that would probably be something we could charge against the coronavirus fund. I, I believe that anything that we're adding as a result of having gone through this pandemic, I think is qualifies. We have been advised from day one, if it's a gray item, and this probably is gray, that we should get an opinion from our prosecutor. But I don't think that it would be anything other than this makes sense to me. So I think we should go forward with those kinds of things if, if you all feel that's appropriate.
Yeah. I think Mrs. Reed, Mr. Stubbs, if you guys agree, I think stuff like that's an important investment that brings us into the 21st century regardless. And we can use these funds for. And I think Mr. Heaton, to your point on Friday, you might be able to clarify that a little bit during that discussion.
We'll submit a question to that very, on that very issue.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. I had one more thing and then I'm done. JED update. I have reached out to the different entities that would possibly be involved in the JED or that is currently being talked to about the JED. I know at our last meeting, there was some talk about setting up a meeting to try to just hash some things out, hopefully get some of those details hammered out. Like I said, I reached out to, to all of the, the three other entities. We have, we're tentatively kicking around the day of September 23rd. I don't know. I have that reached out to Mr. Raymer or Mr. Stubbs. It is tentatively September 23rd at 4:30. I don't know if that day or time works. I know I couldn't bring it to you guys before we had a meeting. Can't set up a meeting without, until we're at a meeting. So Mr. Raymer or Mr. Stubbs, does September 23rd? I'm not sure. That might be a Wednesday, I believe.
It is a Wednesday. I'm unavailable on Wednesdays for the next six weeks.
Are there days or times that work better for you, Mr. Stubbs?
After 6 o'clock, any day, not Wednesday.
Okay. Mr. Raymer, I know you had emailed, I emailed you guys asking if there were days and times I thought that worked better. And I apologize, I didn't hear back from you, Mr. Stubbs. So I was unaware that that, that that would not work. Mr. Raymer, are there other days? I know you did get back. I think you said after 4:00, if I recall.
Yeah. Monday and Wednesdays are my best with, with Mr. Stubbs, not Wednesdays. Monday would be optimal, but I can make Tuesdays or Thursdays and even a Friday possibly. I, I will, I will make it work because it's an important discussion.
Uh, just, uh, so you're aware, the 22nd, are you talking about September?
Uh, yes, I am. To be honest, to me, the, the sooner the better to get this discussion going.
So the 22nd Township Hall will be unavailable at 7:00.
With this number of people, we should not do it at our township hall. And I will simply need at least 24 hours notice since this is going to be a special trustee meeting for both Jackson and German and whatever the city, who, I don't know how many they'll send. But we have 24-hour notice that we have to give to the media. So.
Uh, Mr. Heaton, I'm gonna, I guess look to you for guidance on this. So it makes it a little difficult trying to get all three different entities to come up with a day and a time along with, you know, us. So going forward, like I said, this meeting is when I brought up the 23rd. If I reach out to them and choose a, a Monday or whatever day that, that works for them, how would you recommend? Just do I let you know or, and then you get in contact with the other trustees to see if that day works for them?
I'm happy to do that for you.
And I should add, I, I generally think about just weekdays. I'm, I'm happy to meet on a Saturday or Sunday if that's something everyone else wants to do. So I'll make myself available.
Weekends probably work better for me, but I, I'll make it work if I can. So my kids have sports five nights a week, Saturday mornings, but, but we can get it. So, okay, I will, I'll be in contact with Mr. Heaton once I reach out to them. So no Wednesdays. Mr. Stubbs, is there, and you said after 6?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I might recommend as you're talking to the other entities, one possibility would be to meet at the high school. The choir room might work, but it would need to be a fairly large venue because it's at least two public meetings. And depending on how many Farmersville and Germantown send, it may be a public meeting for each of them too.
Pretty sure the school's off limits for outside business.
It could be, but my understanding, just reaching out to the different entities was they, they are not sending a quorum, if you will, to the meeting. They don't, they don't feel that that's necessary. So I don't believe that they would be having an open meeting. It would really just be German Township that would be having an open meeting. The JED does fall into executive session. So we could then go into executive session to discuss these details if we would like to do that. But I don't believe at this time, talking to them, that it would be an open meeting for the other jurisdictions. I believe, uh, real quick, before we get off of this, WebEx meetings, is that something we want to leave at how it is? Are we wanting to put the board in the township hall and have everybody else online? Because I'm trying to figure out where we left it with that.
Another thing that, just another idea, um, that might be a good idea if, like for example, the zoning commission met, the board members were all present and then people that wanted to make a comment or the, the applicant, the, the people that submitted the application, they were there also. It might be a good idea if the board members, you know, no matter what, are together. And then anybody that wants to speak directly to the board potentially come. But I don't know about the capacity limitations and such, but just an idea.
Mr. Raymer or Mr. Stubbs, do you have any advice or guidance? Or do you just want to leave it how it is and move on from there? Do you not see anything wrong with the way it's going? Like I said, I'm open for discussion.
I'll leave it to Mr. Stubbs. I know he had some comments, but I guess I'll just refrain back to where I was, you know? If, if someone sees a pressing need that they're not getting met right now, then I'm willing to do it. But I don't know what that need might be. And I'd like for somebody to, you know, announce a need so we can do something better for them. Mr. Stubbs?
I mean, we can keep it the same for another month, but we're two hours into a meeting that should last an hour tonight. So we need to keep this moving. It's not pleasant for the 25 people that logged up and to listen to this for over two hours. Keep it the same for this month. We can discuss it then.
Uh, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Stubbs. I'm not sure how that's relevant at all. I, the one thing I'll say is, I think there's a lot to discuss in a month's time that goes on in the township. I don't know if we want to discuss having multiple meetings during a month, but I'm a little frustrated that we would gloss over a lot of these issues, especially as this amount of financial information that was brought tonight and do that in one hour every month.
So we're tentatively leaving it how it, how it is. Is that correct? Okay. And then we'll do, we can always, like I send out, if you want to add anything to the agenda, feel free to add stuff to the agenda. If, if you want this as an agenda item, please let me know so that we can add it to the agenda so that, so that we know and all of us kind of know what, what's on, what's on the agenda and what to expect. So if you would like that added next month, Mr. Stubbs, please email so that I know. I believe, Mr. Stubbs, you are up and I am done.
I'll keep mine incredibly brief. Pool, I was, I was unable to attend due to my Wednesday conflict for about eight weeks. However, talking to the pool manager, no issues. And we're working on schedule, pools closed. We're working on scheduling a budget meeting, hopefully on a Saturday. So I'll let you know on that. Cemetery, we're up to 33 burials so far, which is way down, surprisingly. But I, I think it's a lot of coronavirus people not wanting to get, or unable to gather. So funding-wise, we're still okay for right now. We're going to be looking at replacing a couple weed eaters, potentially at the beginning of next year that are approximately 10 years old, one that's 14 years old. One thing that needs to be discussed, not necessarily tonight, maybe next month, is the trash billing clerk position. So that's just something to keep in mind. I did have one question regarding the headline article in the Germantown Press. I was just wondering how it came to be that that was, that became an article? Did we contact the press on that one? Because it seems a little odd that the press would reach out for that topic, but they were not interested at all in the replacement and resignation of a, of a trustee.
I don't know what topic you're talking about. I apologize, Mr. Stubbs.
Uh, the interview with you and Germantown Trustee's ready to look at a JED that was in the press on September 3rd?
I, I actually haven't seen that article. Mr., I apologize, I can't think of his name, from the Germantown Press actually reached out to me. I think it's been probably, probably two weeks ago, if not more, as far as I had students. On a Monday, I, he called me during the day. I was at work. I didn't answer it. He then called me back at about 3:30. And one of, his question really was, he's heard the city talk about it and why hasn't he heard us? So I, like I said, I haven't seen the story. But what I told him is that we have been talking about it, that we did talk about the JED at the last meeting. And to, that, that it's something that I personally think is, is good for the township. And I, I hope that we are able to come to a resolution and I suggest citizens attend. He asked if we had had citizens say one way or the other. I said, we did have a meeting where several citizens came in support of a JED. But like I said, he reached out to me twice. It was kind of out of the blue. It was the only time I believe that the Germantown Press gentleman has reached out to me for anything. So I was kind of taken aback as well, Mr. Stubbs. But I haven't actually read the story. Was that in last week's press then?
It was on.
Okay. So.
Two weeks.
They wouldn't have him anymore. Okay. I was going to say, I would like to see the story that I was quoted in. He didn't tell me when it was going to run. I wondered why he was in such a hurry on a Monday. I think that's their deadline. I don't, I don't know. Maybe he just needed to fill a spot on a Monday. But I haven't actually seen the piece.
Okay. I just, I've never, I've never been contacted outside of running for state representative by him. I've never been contacted as a township trustee to comment. And some of the comments make it sound like you're speaking for all of us at the township and that the deal is ready to go. We're just waiting for coronavirus to be over to implement it.
Like I said, I haven't seen it. I apologize if that's how it was written or if it came across. I will try to get my hands on one of those to read it. If, if I feel that it is that way, I will contact him and discuss that with him. But I did not reach out to him. Like I said, he reached out to me twice. So I gave a statement on my beliefs. Obviously, I do not represent all of you guys. You guys are all individuals and have your own beliefs on, on the JED and on any item. So I apologize if it came across that way, Mr. Stubbs, but that's not at all the way that I intended it when I, when I said it. But I'll try to read that article. I haven't seen it.
All right. And the other thing, I've not seen Germantown speak of the JED except for in their last meeting when they talked about the failures of the past and the potential greed that was in play. So, you know, hopefully I've brought, I've brought five or six questions forward. And I've been upfront about this from the very beginning. So hopefully we can work through some of those issues. I, I, like I said, I've presented them all. I'm not hiding anything. I've, I've, I've said it all out in public multiple times. And I don't appreciate being misrepresented. I've been talked to at my placement of employment and other places as well. Misinformation that's being spread, most likely by people close to this JED. So it's disappointing to hear. But that's where I'll leave it. I look forward to meeting with the group whenever that is possible to discuss how this can go forward, if it can go forward. And that will, let me make sure, conclude my report. I did talk to Dr. Cross or received an email from him earlier, but I believe that's going to be covered under Mr. Raymer's. So I am, that concludes my report.
All right, Mr. Raymer.
All right. I'll try to move as quickly as possible. Zoning, the only thing I have, I have a couple of things there. You know, the packets are going to be coming from Haley here directly for the hearing we'll have on October 1st or planned for October 1st. You know, obviously I'm asking both you trustees, I know you guys will do your homework, but really engaging, my understanding, and Mr. Cross can add comments, is that there was a lot of interest in one particular case here. I haven't seen the facts of it myself, and I'll try to dig in as deeply as possible. But I want to make you aware that, you know, don't, please don't rely on me just because I'm the trustee over zoning on this. I, I really would love for you guys to ask your own questions. You have a lot of experience. And I, I beg of you to, you know, dig into that with us when we get there on October 1st. So that's comment on that. The, the BZA email. So Mr. Cross, you know, I'll give you opportunity. I don't want to misquote you. Give you an opportunity. You had several points in your email and I appreciate you reaching out. So I'll give you a chance to, to tee that up and then I'll answer your questions that you may have there.
Okay. Basically, the question was, there is an alternate position on the BZA that has not been filled. And my question to Tyler was, why hasn't it been filled? Because it really needs to be, you need to have that extra, extra, uh, extra alternate member on there. In the case being, the last two BZA meetings, the last meeting on 9-1, there was only actually three members present. And that was to try to decide a case. And the meeting before that, there was actually only four members present. And one of the members, Valerie Hill, was being asked to join the, or fill the position that was vacant. So, and so my, my, I guess the gist of the question, why hasn't it been filled? Because I know of one very qualified applicant who has put in her resume and she, she put in her resume on 9 or 8/22, I think. And it's just been sitting there. So I can't, I don't understand why that has not been filled because it really does need to be filled. And the, the idea that, two, two reasons. The, the Board of Zoning Appeals is really, it's, it's called a quasi-judiciary board. It really has a lot of power. And to me, it has more power than anybody that's a non-elected official in the township. Let me get my cat out of the way. And, and you really need five members there because those differing opinions can make a big difference in how the case is decided. So also, if you only have three members there, like on the 9-1 meeting, theoretically, you could have two of the members agree and one disagree. And then that, that, that's whatever it was, a condition use or whatever, could have been passed. Whereas if you had five members, you could have had three members agree with the single member and change the entire, entire decision. So, and I, so I'm trying to summarize this so we don't take, take too much time. We have a, a, a very, very good candidate in Abigail Dennis. And, you know, good credentials, lifelong Germantown resident, very, very committed to the, to the, to the township. And basically, when we talk about how these are selected, there really isn't a procedure. But the procedure in the past has been that the trustee underneath, over, over the, over the zoning has made a recommendation to the board and then they have voted upon it. So I would love to see that, that recommendation made tonight and that position filled if possible. There's really no reason to hold off when you have someone that qualified to fill it. We, we, you know, we have had times have opening, have had openings and nobody to fill them because nobody was interested. This is just the opposite where we got a very interested person who is well-qualified. So let's go ahead and do it. And that's why I, I reached out to Mr. Remmers about the situation. Go ahead, Tyler. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. As always, welcome the emails and the, the interest and the passion. Obviously, you're passionate about this one. I'm not so convinced with some of the points that you're making. What I'll say is, Mr. Cross, you know, been here for two months and definitely trying to get up to speed and exactly how these things have proceeded in the past. And my understanding was, it was in my discretion of going to appoint all. And my understanding was, it was in my discretion of going to appoint alternate as well as any commission or BZA member that, that is, is an open seat. We do have a full five-member seat now on the BZA with one alternate, so six members. I do understand your concern about three people being there. If we had one more alternate, that still wouldn't make five people. We still had a couple people tonight. So that doesn't actually go in line with what you're saying of reversing a majority in that situation. So what I would say is adds ten more percent, fifteen more percent capacity. My understanding is, talking with the BZA over a month ago, is that this was not imperative. We need to be choiceful. As you mentioned, the BZA is extremely imperative to have the right people on that board as we move forward, because there's a lot of tough choices that are made regarding the township. And I think more tough choices to come, if there is growth to come along with school levy passing, and I know there's some other growth that's, that's happening within the district. So I do see it as imperative to get the right person in there. I, I, I appreciate the email though, because it immediately prompted me to reach out to Haley and ask for all some middle, so I can stay up to date with who's interested. And I've not spoken to anyone that's, that's expressed interest to me directly. And so I'll continue to talk to people and understand. And I'm, I definitely, you've, you've brought up Abigail's name tonight. I know she's on the call, so I've never met Abigail and I haven't seen her resume yet, but I will definitely look through that and consider it. But I would say, what I was told is that there's not imperative position. We have a full board. In the past, we haven't even had two alternate positions open. That's something that's happened more recently in the past five years. And so something dictated or mandated that we need to have two alternates to fill a seven-person alternate and board for a five-person board this position, when you can have three people make a decision on, on a case. So everything you've said is very noted, but what I would say is that discretion needs to be played out over time, not imperatively. And we definitely don't have an open board position, and so I don't understand why you would ask for something to be done tonight. It almost feels as though, just being honest and transparent, that you're pushing an agenda with one specific individual, rather than allowing us to due process to anyone that may have interest and consider the need of it.
So, so my question is, how many resumes has Haley received then for the position?
So we have two resumes, I'm speaking to Haley, and I will get those this week and consider those. But as I said, there's nothing imperative. I will continue to talk to the commission and understand when that need will be filled. And also I'll note that, you know, there's issues, as people, Chief Anzik has mentioned tonight, about COVID and communications. And my understanding of the reason there was only three participants that night was because of miscommunication related to COVID. They've been meeting intermittently, as you know, the BZA, because issues only come up intermittently. It's not like they have a continuous meeting schedule as a set time like the trustees. And so I was also told by a BZA member that this is one of the first times in probably three to four years that only three members has met. So I understand, as duly noted, but it's quite the individual circumstance rather than the norm.
I, you know, because you've, if, if you don't have five members present, you need those extra two just in case. I don't see any reason why you are not picking a qualified person, you know.
Okay, that's fine. I just laid them out. I appreciate that. And we understand that we both disagree on this, and that's fine, too.
Well, you, 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 and I don't want to bring up the other person who his resume has been submitted, but I don't think she's anywhere near the quality of the, of Abigail.
Well, see, that's the unfortunate part of this is, to be completely frank with you, Mr. Cross, that's, that's not any kind of relevance to this situation. As you mentioned, this is going to be my discretion based on what I think is the best interest of the townspeople of Germantownship, speaking to those people that are qualified. And I will reach out to the candidates and have a discussion with them, and I'll also look for more qualified candidates. And we also need to make a decision, and I'm open to discussion on this, on whether we post these things publicly. I've been told in the past by the BZA that they don't post these things, that they look for people that are volunteering. But it's something that I've kicked around, that I think it's, it's worth noting to, to the public of what positions are open. So people even know that there's an opportunity to participate. And I think, you know, just assuming, because maybe you've told Ms. Dennis of this opening position that, and she's shown interest, that I should accept that and immediately move forward. I don't think that's fair to anyone in the township. So I'll leave the conversation there. You understand where I stand. I think it's very clear.
I think, I agree that, because I asked Haley a while back when she was going to advertise that position, and she decided not to for some reason. So I agree. It, it should have been advertised after Valerie Hill moved from the alternate position to the board position.
Well, I think it still can be, correct? It still can be, right?
But, but, you know, yeah, then do it, okay? I, you know, I'm, I'm a private citizen, just trying, I, I was on the BZA for eighteen years, so I have a little bit more experience with the whole thing. I, I think that you're make, I, I don't, I don't agree with your decision. I think that when you have someone that is willing to do it, I think, and a board should be at full strength at all times, just in case.
So let me ask you a question, just to, to play this out. So if I have a candidate that we know that hasn't submitted a resume, but they want to be on that board, and I just go ahead and appoint them to, to fulfill it tonight, would that make you happy? If I see them as fit?
No, it, it would not make me happy, but have you seen Mrs. Dennis's resume? Have you even taken a look at it?
Well, and that's the thing, is I'm not looking to fill that position right now, because I still need to make a decision if we're going to open this up to the public and what other trustees think about this, opening this up to the public, rather than just having me appoint the people that people have passed on in this situation. So I think there's things to be determined. I think this hasn't been fully vetted, discussed. And like I said, I'm onboarding in the first few months, and I've been assured by the BZA that this is not unusual and not needed at this moment, and it's not imperative, as you see it is.
Well, I, I don't talk to the BZA, but again, you should really not be having a lot of conversations with the BZA, because they are an independent board. So let's, let's have the, do, do the other trustees have any opinion on this tonight while we're talking about it?
I think it's a great idea to open it up. I believe it's a great idea to open up to the public. I think, Mr. Raymerz.
It's been opened up to.
Mr. Cross, can I please finish, sir? I think. Oh, I know when Mr. Raymerz applied to be a trustee, and several other people applied to be a trustee, one of the first questions was, do you ever, you know, you need to apply to be on one of the open boards? Well, if we don't open it up to the public to allow them to apply for that or to sit in on those, we can't really fault the public for not being on those boards if we haven't given them the opportunity to do so. So I personally believe that we need to open it up, put it all, all over the same routes that, that we do any other, posting, Facebook, the email list, like even put in the press, however we want to advertise that position, and leave it open for a few weeks and, and see what we get from there. I think all the community involvement that we get, the better. Hopefully, we have ten applicants, you know? I know for the township position, there was some hesitation to open it up and just to not accept the person that was there. And I, I think that it ended up, you know, we got multiple people involved, that some of these people are still on the calls now. Now, they weren't chosen, but they're still actively involved with the, with the township, at least sitting in on the meeting, and I think that's great. So I'm all for opening that up.
Well, I agree. Then open it up, then put the advertisement out there. We've been waiting too long, is what, is one of my big points. We should have had that, once, once Valerie filled that, filled the board position and the alternate position was open, there should have been an advertisement. So it's been, you know, how many weeks? So did.
In the past, in the past, we'd advertised in the press for two weeks when the vacancy came up. And then that's where in the, when I was over zoning for six years or whatever it was, myself and the zoning inspector or zoning inspector would look over the resumes and potentially interview them. And that's why I feel like we have some, I put, we put some really good candidates on the boards. Mr. Schaller, of course, is fantastic, and Mr. Dole's and some of the other replacements we've put on in the last couple of years. When, when we did advertise it, the, the interest that did come in, I know that I had asked the previous zoning inspectors to hold on to those resume, resumes for in the future. I don't know if there are any left over from in the past. There may not be. But advertising it is necessary, and also keeping a full, full board is necessary, too. And I know just recently, in the last five years or so, we added the second alternate. But I think it's important to have a seventh person who knows what's going on in the township, and then they're willing to step in or able to step in at any moment. So I agree with Dr. Cross and the, and that we need it. And I also agree that it needs to be advertised and the best applicant needs to be chosen and appointed by Mr. Raymerz to the Board of Trustees.
Fully agree. So how would you advertise this, both press and Facebook? Is the recommendation?
I know, in the past, Mrs. Rohrbach has an email list, if you will, of people that are actively involved in the township. And a lot of times, I think almost every time, things are sent out to that email list as well. I don't, I'm not sure of any other avenues of advertising. Please feel free to speak up, Mr. Stubbs, if, if you know other ones or Mr. Heaton.
We have the Facebook for, for zoning, and I have a small list that I also use to distribute information.
We had just used the press in the past, but that was prior to us actually having a Facebook that had followers, so that's, that's where we're at.
Suggest Facebook, Mr. Heaton's distribution and Lori's distribution. Sound fair?
I, I think that sounds good. Yes.
And, and I'm, I'm going to say that thirty days is, is sufficient, but not overly undue, considering we have six people. We have an alternate right now, and as Mr. Stubbs mentioned, that's not been what we've had years prior. So I, I don't feel, and I'm sorry, Mr. Cross, if you disagree, that thirty days to ninety days is unusual for an alternate position as you're looking for the right candidate. I think that's the right move for the township, especially on the BZA.
Yeah, no problem. I think that you need to, you know, ideally, the town needs to move forward with it and, and, you know, yeah, so.
Yep, that's fair. Okay, so that's, that's, I appreciate, Mr. Cross, again, email me anytime. I appreciate these types of things. And obviously, I'm gonna have a spirited response and, and conversation with you. On the JED, happy about everything we talked there. I'm good on it. Only thing I'll add to that is I did talk with the superintendent, just because last conversation we had on this trustee meeting a month ago, there were some comments about whether there was even support from the school district. He's still fully supportive, and so is the school district. They go forward with the land deal, and everything is moving forward as it's been planned from the beginning on that. Care's that funding, take care of that tonight. And then, let's see, the only other thing, and I'll make this super brief, because I know we are running really late tonight, is just the past two months, you know, I, I, I am onboarding still. I'm still a lot of complex issues and learning for me. And what I'll say is, I've, I've been really happy and honored to be a part of the trustees. I think I bring an element of studying the details and digging into issues, and I'm sorry if that takes too long for us to discuss, but I think these are important issues. I take these very seriously. I think anytime we're spending the, the public's money, we're going to do it in a, in a way that's studied, measured, and, and responsive to the, to the general public. A couple of positive things I think that we should call out to the community that we probably haven't, they're not aware of, not that we need to be a, a marketing or branding company, but was very pleasantly surprised when I met with Chief Anzik and Lori Rohrbach on a lot of the things that police have done with the accreditation over the last several years and the standards that they uphold, especially if you look at today's society and the issues we're seeing with policing and conversations there. I think it's something we can hang our hat on, that we've done very well at the Germantownship. You know, accreditation that she's upheld. I hope the person that we replace her with will have her capability and dedication and attention to detail to maintain that and continue that, or at least uphold the standard that we've set so far. You know, another thing is meeting with Mr. Holbrook and Scott out in the road and bridge. What I've become abundantly apparent is we're underfunded clearly in the road and bridge department, heavily underfunded. Completely different than a lot of other budgets that we have within the township in many different ways, and I'll have more information on that as we move forward. Mr. Heaton has provided me tons of information, going back several years and looking at spend and revenues that have come in and how things have changed. And I would just want to commend, you know, Mr. Holbrook and Scott for what they've done, especially Mr. Holbrook for managing that budget and then how they've tried to, you know, Band-Aid our roads together with what we're dealing with right there. So I think that's another place we need to communicate to the community, you know, Mr. Holbrook mentioned a couple of people called in. I'm sure some of those were from my neighborhood, because we had our road chip sealed and obviously a lot of dust, a lot of gravel, and I had some complaints to my door. And I just explained to them the situation with the budget and what's the difference between asphalt funding and chip seal. And I think there's a lot of information that needs to be shared with the public on that. You know, I've been extremely pleasantly happy with Mr. Heaton and the work he's done so far. He's getting me up to speed with all the financials. He spends a lot of time devoted to providing me information, and he's a model employee, and I appreciate his service. Obviously, Haley has been extremely patient as well and had a lot of willingness to get me up to speed on a lot of different issues. And it's not surprising how much interaction she has with the township. It probably has as much as anybody outside of the police department. So I appreciate Haley's work there. The last couple of things I'll say is that obviously there's always areas to improve. The biggest thing I want to address is I think that, you know, these, these communications have definitely improved over the last six months. There's no, no doubt about it. But I, I think that, you know, I think everyone on this call, there's no doubt in my mind, is on here to do what's best for the township. And I think a lot of times we speak without giving that modicum of respect to each other. And I'd appreciate, you know, right now, you take me seriously when I'm having this conversation with a lot of people on this call, because we need to treat each other as if we're doing what's in the best interest of the township, and I have communications that reflect that. And if not, in the future, we might have to make changes to, to different situations, the way we hold meetings and the way we interact. But that's one thing I think we can do better at, and I think we can do better at immediately. So I'll keep my, my comments there for tonight, and I know it's went two and a half hours, but I think there's important topics that we covered tonight, and I hope everyone found this beneficial.
All right, I know our next item is new business. I'm sorry, Mr. Raymerz, were you finished?
Yes, thank you.
But it was brought to my attention that Mr. Keener has something. Mr. Keener, I think, yep, you're still on here.
I am still on here, and I think I'm not muted now. Is that correct?
I can hear you.
Okay, you had mentioned during the JED discussion about going into executive session. I know that there was a email received from the prosecutor's office back in March concerning executive session for the JED. And it was his opinion at the time that that was permissible. We did go into executive session in our March meeting to discuss the JED. After we had that meeting, I looked at the statute, which is O R C one twenty-one dot twenty-two G eight. And actually, I'm going to suggest that maybe you contact the prosecutor's office and, of course, loop in your fellow trustees on this, just for clarification, because that particular part of the code mentions that going into executive session for a JED is to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance. As of right now, we have no applicant. I wasn't aware of that in our March meeting. I thought the school had done something formal to apply to be the applicant for the JED. I've since found that there has been no formal action on the part of the school board requesting a JED out at that property. So there is no applicant at this point, and so to go into executive session would be improper. I'm not an attorney. We're both well aware of that. So I'm going to suggest that you contact Mr. Peterson again and get clarification on that. I'd also like to remind you, and this was in the email from Mr. Peterson back in, in March, that the, to go into executive session, even if we do have an applicant. And quite frankly, I'm not sure how the school board can have confidential information relating to marketing plans, blah, 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 as stipulated by that particular part of the O R C. However, that O R C also requires that it be unanimous on the quorum of the public body. So if one of your other two fellow trustees decides that it's not in the best interest to go into executive session to discuss the JED, then it's not permissible.
Thank you, Mr. Keener. Sorry. Thank you. I will reach out to Mr. Peterson and see if his thoughts have changed. I was going off of what he sent last time, which said that it was a direct reason to go into executive session. So with this knowledge, I will reach out to Mr. Peterson again and hopefully get an email or some response from him and share it with the fellow trustees, so that we all know kind of what, by all means, I think we want to do this the right way and discuss everything in the, in the right way, so that the citizens know what's going on. So I'll reach out to, to Mr. Peterson. So with that, do we have any new business?
I would just like Mr. Keener to give us his address officially. We know where he lives, but please do it officially.
I, I. I live on the streets. I'm on seventy-eight sixty-five Jamaica Road.
Thank you. It's just a formality. You know that.
I understand. I've done that once or twice.
Thank you.
You bet.
I don't, do we have any new business?
I have none.
Old business? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I do appreciate everybody's time tonight.
We're adjourned at nine thirty-one.
Thank you. Thanks for your time, and this was the longest meeting ever. I appreciate it. I appreciate it.